Okay. Ooh, reverb. Woo, I got a bad cable. That's fun. We're live, baby. I wanna learn French, but I don't know how. I've been trying for a long time and nothing's ever stuck. I took two years of Spanish in high school and I don't remember any of it. I even went to Germany to study German and I don't know how to speak any German. I'm bad, I got a bad teachers. I don't have an ear for it. I don't know what to do, I'll never learn. This is the language learning fear song. You've got some excuses and they're all wrong. You've got a big old brain and you can do it. So take that negative attitude and cool it. How do you like this theme song? The next part goes. Oh wait. If you want to learn how to speak, first you must learn how to believe. And then you can't leave out this. Skylar learns French, yes he does. Okay, well that was... Welcome to the show, everybody! People are like, "What the...? What is Sweaker doing? Jesus." Um, hey, this is Skylar. This is my show about learning French. Bonjour tout le monde, je m'appelle Skylar. Uh, je suis Skylar. Mon nom est Skylar. Et je prends le français tous les jours. Uh, et aujourd'hui, il est le dix-sept... Dix-sept heures? The sixteenth day? We've been doing this for sixteen days. Sixteen days in a row. Uh, and um, I don't know if my French is getting better. Haha! Um, but, you know, I've been here. I mean, I've at least been here, I've done it. Um, so I've got that going for me. Uh, okay, so we're gonna learn some French today. You're invited to watch if you'd like to. Um, or thanks for popping in and saying hey. Uh, appreciate it. I always um, like comments. If you drop them in, I'll probably include them for the next show. Uh, da-da-da. So, here's how we're gonna do this. I'm gonna do some vocabulary first and then we're gonna read through Chicken Little. I'm on a kick right now to learn kids' books and kid's stories. Um, because uh, they're kind, they're designed for kinda dumb humans. Who are still learning how to speak. And that's kinda me right now. So um, let's do it together. Um, and I think I found their winning formula here too, so. Uh, I'm gonna go to my uh, my flashcards. We're gonna go through a couple flashcards. And then I'm gonna go to these pictures so we can do some little uh, image association as well. Okay, hope you guys are having fun on this uh, mardi. This Tuesday. The uh, quatorze le juillet, juillet, juillet du mi-vent. Uh, that's me trying to do the date. If you... It's the fourteenth of July. Let's do it. Uh, une chaussière. Une chaussière. I think that's uh, how you do that. Une chaussière. Chausseur, sorry. Une chaussure, this is a shoe? It's a shoe. Uh, des lunettes, these are glasses. Une pomme, this is an apple. Uh, un revêtement. Un revêtement. Ah, shite. Ah, alright, that's a big X already. Ah, ah, ah. Un revêtement, un revêtement. I'm undoing a lot of bad habits this week. Un revêtement. So, uh, cool, I think I got a couple more here. Un bonhomme, un bonhomme de neige. Un bonhomme de neige. Oh, de neige, a little bit deeper there. Un bonhomme de neige, this is a snowman. And un sac à main, un sac à main. Un sac à main. Uh, and this is kind of a purse. Okay, so here's my, my new way I'm approaching this. So those are all flashcards based on this little book. This is a kid book. And look, now they've got little pictures, so we should remember these. Uh, un chasseur. Chasseur. Des lunettes. Une pomme. Un revêtement. Oh yeah, this is like the dream waker in my brain. Un revêtement. Un bonhomme de neige. How can you not, how can you not remember the bonhomme de neige? He's so cute! And uh, un sac à main. So this is a uh, little purse. I don't know, what's the best way to remember that? A sack? I got that, it's a bag. À main, like your main bag. I guess that's the way I'm gonna remember this. The uh, most important bag. Uh, cool. So let's go, let's continue on. And we'll uh, we're now in chapter two of the kids book. Page two. Uh, okay. First one. Un ratin. Un ratin. Oh, récon, almost. Kinda flipped them there. It's a shark. Un ratin. Une serviette, this is a towel. Des pommes, these are flippers. Une banane. Une banane. Banane, it's a banana. Une pantalon. Un pantalon. Un pantalon. My lord. Le pantalon, un pantalon. Okay? Is it le pantalon, the trousers? Or would it be les pantalons? Cause aren't they like always kind of two? Pants? You know, like, cause there's two legs, it's plural, I don't know, whatever. Uh, des sandales, this is sandals. Des sandales. Uh, lapin. This is a rabbit. We're going to, okay? Uh, un chapeau, it's a shampoo. Un mallet de bain. This is a uh, bathing suit? Bathing suit. Malon. Up, 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 wanna hear it? Mallet, mallet de bain. Un maillot de bain. Un maillot de bain. Cool. Un canard, une canne. Un canard, une canne. This is a duck. Lucky duck. Uh, barrezol. This is a, this is a beach umbrella. Un barrezol. Beach umbrella. Or a beach umbrella, if you prefer. Okay, so let's go to our book now. Hmm, review! Look at the little shark guy. Un ratin. Very cute. Une serviette, little towel. Une serviette. Des pommes. Flippers. Et ballon. Do I have balloon? This is kinda like a beach ball in this, in this setting. I wonder if that's what that means? Um. Une tarte. That is a, that's a turtle, obviously. I forgot the word. Une bannonne, okay? Uh, un, un pantalon. Un pantalon, eh, trousers. Eh, pants. Uh, da-da. Des, des san, des sandales. Des sandales. I'm being really ridiculous with these uh, pronunciations. But I'm really trying to get it. You know, I'm trying to like imprint it in my, in my brain. So I have to overdo it. Des sandales. Okay, des sandales. Um, those are sandals. Un lapin. A rabbit, that is a cute rabbit right there. Un lapin. Uh, I think that rabbit is wearing a, un mallet de bain. No? Okay. Un chapeau. Those are uh, that's shampoo. In a little, in a little bottle. Un canard, it's a duck. And un mallet de bain. Uh, bathing suit. And un barrezol. Okay, cool. Sandals. Ooh, Andrew's chiming in here, it's sandals. Um. You know, that's not what my voice translator says, so, I mean, come on. Um. Uh, okay, so, uh, and Adrian says, Tu as progressé avec les after girls et la prononciation, prononciation, prononciation! Uh, trying to give me a compliment and I'm even messing that up. Most of the time, not all the time. Yep, yep, that's kinda how it goes, kinda how it goes. Okay, and then, oh, question is answered. Un pantalon, uh, including both legs. If you say pantalons, it'll be two trousers. That is great! Thank you for the answering of my questions. You guys are the true heroes. Okay, we're gonna go on to chapter two. No, chapter three, chapter trois, chapter... You can't just say, sometimes I just say things in French accents. Chapter! Totally wrong. Okay. Uh, super héros. Super héros. Un super héros. Uh, un super héros. Okay, superheroes? Une girafe. Une girafe. Une girafe. Une fleur. Yay, flower. Uh, une mouette. This is a seagull. Seagull. Une échelle, une échelle. These are, this is a ladder. Une échelle, la échelle. Une échelle, la échelle. Uh, un beignet. This is a donut. I wanted to say, this is a beignet. I mean, why do I have to explain myself to you? You should know what a beignet is. Donut. Uh, un papillon, this is a butterfly. Yay! Un parachute. Uh, this is a parachute. Uh, un feuille. See if I got it. Feuille, dang, dang. Feuille, feuille. Un feuille, this is a leaf. Un hippopotame. Oh wait, yeah. Un hippopotame, this is a hippopotamus. Great. Un os. Remember this is kind of, this is connected. Un os. Um, so that is what, a bone? It's a bone. Une fusée, this is a rocket. Or a rocket ship, rocket. Une fusée. And un ballon. Uh, balloon. Okay, cool. So now we're gonna go to the kids book and get some visual representation. Uh, regardez les illustrations. Okay. Un super héros, héros. Un, un super héros. Okay, cute little super bunny. Or a rabbit or something. Une, uh, une girafe. Very happy giraffe. Une girafe, girafe est très content. Une fleur. Okay? Une mouette, a seagull, une mouette. Okay? Une échelle. Got, got a good ladder there. I wanna play chutes and échelles, les échelles. Right? And beignet. Cool, got the donut. Are there different kinds of donuts? Um, never mind, I'm moving on. Uh. Un papillon. Butter, uh, butterfly. Une parachute, un parachute? Great. The butter, wait, is this the same superhero bunny that uh, now needs a parachute? Not so super. Okay. Uh, un hippopotame, un hippopotame. Hippopotame. Okay? Un feuille, un feuille. I'm getting closer on that one. Un feuille, a leaf. Um, un os. And une fus, fusée. Une fusée. And? Un ballon. Yay! Okay, how are we doing on time? Doing okay? I think we're doing okay. Let's do one more, let's do one more chapter. Oops, oops, that's not where I wanna be. I wanna be back here. Uh, here. Oh my gosh, what am I doing? Okay, let's do one more chapter, which is just pages. Uh, okay. And, une, nope, 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 nope. Eh. Un panda. Uh, no, it's gonna be un panda. I betcha. Panda, yep, panda. Un panda, okay? Des cerises. I, I figured out the trick to this, it's ce and then ris. Des cerises. Des cerises, okay, those are cherries. Une pochette, this is a knife? Oh no, sorry, fork, the fork. Uh, une trottolet, this is a scooter. Oops. Yep, scooter. Uh, un escargot, un escargot. This is a snail. Le escargot. Eh, oh, sorry, nope, nope. Une poubelle, une poubelle. Trashcan. Yes. Des frites, uh, these are french fries. Une verre, this is a worm. How far are we going, yep. Uh, da-da-da, da-da-da, da-da. Une glace, this is uh, ice cream? Yep. Une casserole. Uh, this is a frying pan. Une boîte à repas. See how I did there? Yep, okay, so that's a lunchbox. I knew it, I flipped it too early. Uh, un die. Un die. I didn't get my, un die, I didn't get my questions answered on this yesterday. Is it plural? Cause a singular die is die, right? So is it les dies? Or is it un die? A dice. How do we, how do we work on that? Okay, and one more. Uh, un hélicoptère, hélicoptère. Un hélicoptère, hélicoptère. Okay! That's cool. Um. I didn't, I didn't really make any progress on new words. Let's see, how far do we have to go? Oh my gosh, we have so many to do. Uh, let's review what we got. I think I did pretty good on that, that grouping. Okay. I'm only forty-four of the three hundred words. I need a lot more words to graduate from this kids book. Okay. Un panda. Deux cerises. Cool. I like, I like these illustrations, they help with the brain and them, and them remembering, okay? Une pochette. Une trottolet, great. Un escargot. Une poubelle. Des fruits. Un verre, a worm, un verre. Une glace. Uh, ice cream. Une casserole. Une boîte, une boîte à repas. Un die. And un hélicoptère, hélicoptère. Okay, cool. Graduating from chapter three. Cause I'm so smart, smarter than a little kid, okay? Um, so, we have a couple minutes. Actually, hold on, I'm not gonna cheat, I'm gonna keep going. You guys don't have to hang out with me the whole time here. Um, but I need to do more vocabulary words. Okay, next one. Une tigre. Uh, nope. Un tigre, une tigresse. Uh, tiger or tigress? Cool. Une plante, this is a plant. I'm gonna end up sounding like a Google Translate when I finally start speaking to people. Un ballon de football. Football. De football. Un ballon de football, uh, this is soccer ball. Un tee-shirt. This is a tee-shirt. Tee-shirt. Uh, un bonbon, this is candy. Une casquette. This is a baseball hat. Du popcorn, popcorn. Une, une, uh, peinture. Peinture, une peinture. Une peinture, okay, this is a painting, peinture. Des briques. These are Legos or bricks. Une montre, this is a watch. Un lion, a lion. Une télécommande, this is a TV. Une télévision. This is a television. Une voiture de police. Uh, that is a police car. Un arc-en-ciel. Why dude? Un, 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 un arc. An arc, oh yeah, we said this yesterday, it's kinda like an arc. Un arc-en-ciel. Okay. Uh, that's a rainbow. Ooh, there's a dog. Um, des raisins. Um, that is a, that is grapes. And dirigible, dir, dira, dirigible, dang it. Dirigeable, and dirigable. I remember this one. Uh, this is the Goodyear Diddy Do. The Goodyear Blimp. Un dérige, dirigible. Uh, let me see, it is, stop. Dirigeable, dirigable. Okay. Un bus, bus, un bus, un bus. This is a bus. Une, un, un lama, un lama, luma. Lama, luma. Lama. Sometimes, sometimes the words that are like really similar are actually harder to do cause you just can't get past the English. Un lama, lama, un lama. It's a llama. Un lama. Uh, un parapluie, this is a uh, umbrella, is that what we said? Yeah. Parapluie. Une chaussier. Chaussier, ugh, shit. Une chaussier. So this is a uh, sac? Une chaussier. Wait, hold on, gotta... Ah, une chaussier. And then une chaussière, is this shoe? Whoa! Who knew? Une chaussure et une chaussier. They are related. Une mallette. Une mallette. Uh, this is a mallet, no, this is a briefcase. There it is. Eh, arap, ap, appareil. Oh, excuse me, jeez. Appareil photo, appareil. Pare photo, un appareil photo. Uh, this means a camera, apparently. Un appareil photo. I'm, I'm just making it up in my brain, I don't know if, I don't know if this is right, but I'm thinking this is like the apparata, apparatus for making a photo. Un appareil photo. Okay. Okay. Une fraise, une fraise. Oh, Joseph Dunn, hey buddy! Good to see ya! Uh, help me out here, would ya? Une fraise. Uh, these are straw, no, a strawberry, not strawberries. Don't get it twisted, okay? Une carte, this is a map. Yes. Une bisque, bicycle, I know this, hold on, hold on! Do not rush me! Une bicyclette. Bicyclette, une bicyclette. Just say vélo, I mean, come on dude, bicyclette. Okay. Une chèvre. Une chèvre. This is a um, a, 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 a goat. Yes, this is a goat. I have to, in my brain, um... So in my brain, to remember this word, I have a picture of a goat um, wearing a um, like Chevron gas logo, like it's sponsored, like a NASCAR driver. I don't know why, but that's why, that's what works. Une chèvre, okay. Un chapeau, this is a hat. Une boussole, boussole, boussole. Boussole. Ah, I don't remember. Un boussole, what's a boussole? Imboussole, a compass. Dang. Imboussole, it kinda sounds like imbecile. Um, don't be an imbecile when you go camping and bring your boussole. We'll see if that sticks. Okay. Uh, une ruche de bai. Une ruche, ruche, is it ruche or ruche? Une ruche de bai, this is a bihar. Une botte, une botte, um, a boot. Une sautarelle, sautarelle. How many more? Sautrelle. Uh, une sautrelle. This is a grasshopper, ugh, dang. Sautrelle, uh, grasshopper. I gotta come up with some device here, cause I'm not remembering this guy. Um, une cocinelle. Oh, cocinelle, whoa! Cocinelle, cocinelle, it's like double Cs, coast and then T, hard C. Cocinelle, oh, yeah, hard C first, soft. Okay, anyway, this is a ladybug. Ugh, yeah. Ah, we're getting into uncharted territory again, okay? Un panneau de signalisation. Signalisation, un panneau de signalisation. Uh, this is a road sign, yes. Un poisson, this is a fish, un poisson. Un chapinon, chapinon, un chapinon. This is a mushroom. I hope there's lots of chapinons in the next sweet food episode that we do. Cause I, j'adore les chapinons. Um, une bai, une bai, this is bees. Beautiful honeybees. Save the ibae's! Okay. Un, un pot, un pot, un pot, um, what kinda pot are we talking about here? Uh, un panier de picnic, picnic. Un panier, let's see. Un panier de picnic. Um, this is a picnic basket. Panier de pic, picnic. Uh, un rhinocéros, rô. Un rhinocéros. Oh, I didn't, this whole time, I didn't know you could just click the word and then it says the thing. Okay. Un rhinocéros, a rhinoceros. Une toupee. This is a toupee, no, just kidding, ha-ha-ha, gotcha! Uh, this is a top. Uh, like a spinny top, like a top, uh, dreidel, dreidel, dreidel. Uh, na-na, na-na. Une trom, uh, nope, 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 nope. Un trompette. Uh, je jouais le trompette. I have a trumpet right here! Yay! Okay. Uh, un jeu de société. Um, this is a board game. I'm guessing this is like a social game. A, a game of socials. A game of society. Something like that. Board game. Uh, jeu de société. Okay, I'm just gonna keep going and try to finish this out and we'll come back to the picture. Ah, I dropped my trumpet. It's cool. Uh. Un avion, un avion, this is a plane, airplane. Une planche à roulettes. Uh, roulette, sorry, 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 sorry. Uh roulette, sorry, 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 uh this is a skateboard. Right? Did I get that right? Yeah. Planche, like a plank. À roulettes, rolling by. A rolling board, okay? Um une maison, la maison, we got that, we got that. Un robot. Oop.
Un robot.
Un robot. Uh, robot. Une plan- planète, une planète, une planète.
Une planète.
Planète, une planète, it's very close.
Une planète.
Une planète, uh planet, great. Un crocodile.
Un crocodile.
Yes, I love it when I'm like instinctually there, that makes me feel really good. Un crocodile.
Un crocodile.
Une, no, un astrona- une astronaut.
Un astronaut.
Uh this is a astronaut. Une cer- 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 un cer- un cer- un cer-.
Un cer-.
E A U, that's O, E A U X O. Uh da da, like Alexis Mars, so. Don't forget it, un cer- 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 and then what is a cer-? Uh.
Un cer-.
I don't remember. Oh, hula hoop.
Hula hoop.
Un cer-.